Good morning, everybody here in the room and who are joining us remotely to the village council's annual retreat here for 2024. I'll say with the program we put together, it's a pretty aggressive program with a lot of information. I think the mayor mentioned to Scott Gardner acting like a sponge, so be ready to soak it all in. And so, yeah, we, at this point, let's go ahead and get it started with the first agenda item of the Bald Head Island Conservancy Environmental Contract. Have Beth there with us this morning to give a free presentation on that. And as she makes her way to the podium, I'll just acknowledge that annually, the village has a number, has a contract in place. That the village works with the Conservancy on a number of programs and projects that we believe have value to the village. And, and what you will see to the extent that this is something we include in the annual budget each year. And, yeah, so Beth, you will have at it. Thank you.
Hi, Fiona. Morning, everyone. Thanks for your attention this morning. Thank you for allowing me to go first. Have another excitement this afternoon, so I appreciate your attention. First, it's science this morning. Hopefully, it's exciting and fun and interesting. And makes way for the rest of the good work that you all are going to be doing next couple of days. So as Chris said, we have a partnership with the village and the Conservancy. I think because we have a small island here, the village doesn't really have their own environmental department. And the Conservancy tries to take on as many of those tasks as are feasible. And we try to advise the village on scientific matters, environmental matters regarding the projects that we have in the contract. But also potentially other issues that we see coming down the road, such as channel deepening, wind farms, things like that. We've tried to work together to learn as much as we can for the good of the island. So today, I just wanted to give a brief overview. It may not feel brief to you, but we have a lot of different projects here with the village. I'm going to touch on these. There's a lot more where this comes from, so if you have any questions, happy to answer them. Or feel free to send me an email. My email is down here at the bottom of the page. So these are some of the projects that we've been working on in the past year. Some of them we've been working on for multiple years. And I'm going to have some ideas and proposals for some things that we might continue next year, things to think about. First, I wanted to start with our maritime forest. For me, coming here, working on this island for the past five years, this is the first thing that I noticed working here is how beautiful lush the maritime forest is and what a treasure it is. It's something that we really should protect here on the island. Our forest is also recognized as a globally imperiled forest subtype. And for that reason as well, it's really important to preserve this habitat. It protects a number of wildlife species. It protects the island from erosion, wind damage, hurricanes. And it's a really important part of kind of the ethos, I think, of the island. I think a lot of people come here because it looks different than other coastal areas. It's actually the second largest maritime forest in the state of North Carolina. So we are looking at various stressors. We've looked at various stressors through time. One of those is the potential for deer or herbivory. So whitetail deer have been on the island since the 90s and potentially could have a negative impact on the forest if they're munching and grazing. So in the around 2000s, some forests and plots were established by scientists who worked here back then. There are fences like here on the right that exclude deer. And there are paired areas that are unfenced to do a long-term comparison of herbivory. So in the areas where there are fenced, deer cannot go in. If there's a big impact of deer grazing, you would expect to see less plants, lower diversity of plants outside those protected areas. And more plants, whatever, see in those fenced areas. So in 2011, I think these plots have been established for about 10 years. Target and Long found no effect of deer grazing. And that was the time at which that target number of deer, 200, was established. Because that was the number of deer there on the island at that time. So it doesn't mean that we really know that above 200 is going to be bad or that below 200 is good. It's just at that time, they weren't really seeing an impact with 200 deer. In 2020, Jody Forrester from SC State came in and did another evaluation of these forested plots. At that time, the forested plots hadn't really been maintained. So we said it was establishing a new baseline because through storms, damage, potentially deer could have got, been getting into those fences. So she did that evaluation and we said, let's try to really maintain them, focus on keeping these plots in place for the next five years. And then reevaluating maybe in 2025. So at this point, the major change that she saw was the loss of red bay, which is due to an invasive species. We can't really have control over that because it's not something that there's a cure for. But we have noticed a lot less red bay in the forest through time. It's being replaced by laurel cherry, which is kind of a similar sized plant. And we're talking with Dr. Forrester about maybe repeating that assessment in 2025, 26. So this wouldn't come in this next year's village contract, but potentially the year after that. While we're on the subject of the woods, we'll talk about the Bald Head Woods Well Field Assessment. So this is part of the village's agreement with the North Carolina Coastal Reserve to withdraw water from the aquifer, the groundwater underneath the island. And as part of that agreement, the coastal reserve required doing assessment of the amount of water in the wells, in the aquifer, and vegetation sampling. Vegetation sampling had been done in 2017. And unfortunately, the swales, the wet areas that needed sampling were underwater when it needed to be repeated. But for the past couple of years, it's been dry enough to actually be able to access those soil areas, which are ephemeral ponds. And this past year, we worked with the Coastal Reserve Natural Heritage Program and completed that vegetation work. Natural Heritage Program is really in charge of evaluating whether there have been major shifts or not. We're not sure whether they will write a report, but we could write a report this year on that data. And then we, we would suggest that in five years or so, that this gets evaluated again. There can be climate changes. Really, I think that's what's been happening over the past five years. But changes just due to your climate is, is the most significant factor that we're seeing in the forest. We also do aquifer monitoring throughout the island. We've been doing this since 2009. And we've been doing aquifer water quality monitoring since 2014. So monthly, we measure the depth in the wells. And this is really important here in Bald Head Island because we use that aquifer, that groundwater as drinking water source. It also provides the fresh water for the rest of the island. We're really isolated here. So that maritime forest, the freshwater lagoons, the homes for lots of wild alligators. And the drinking water for animals is coming from groundwater. So we want to be on the lookout for things like salinity intrusion, which is saltwater potentially coming in from the outside. The groundwater really is shaped like a lens where it's thicker in the middle and thinner on the edges. And that is where on the edges and the perimeter of the island, where you might start to see saltier water coming in. And that's to be expected to an extent. What we don't want to see is saltwater coming into the interior of the island and potentially damaging our freshwater supply. So this is kind of a busy figure here, but if you look at the map on the left, what it's showing is the thickness of the groundwater or the height of groundwater in the particular well is correlated to the size of the dots. So where you have smaller dots, there's less groundwater. So that's a thinner lens. And where you have larger dots, that's a thicker groundwater lens or deeper water. And as I mentioned before, this makes sense. This is from, this is 2023 data on our perimeter wells. We're seeing thinner groundwater lens. And here in the interior, this is like the dune ridge area of the golf course, it's a thicker groundwater lens. So that is expected. What we want to look for are trends through time. And here are the wells going from 2019, 2009 to present. So here in the interior, you can see there's not much change in these two wells. Here on the perimeter, there had been some change, but actually, we had an increase in the thickness of that lens. So more water in the, in the wells through time. Why could that be? One thing that I was concerned about was, could that potentially be saltwater that's coming into that perimeter well? So we can look at that similar type of map, but this is salinity. So saltier water is a larger circle. You can see here a middle island or wells. On Middle Island, the aquifer is very, very close to the surface, very, very thin lens there. So those wells are pretty salty on Middle Island. And then here, that perimeter well that we're looking at before has saltwater in the wells. These are the two wells that we looked at before on the interior. So they're zero, so they're fresh. But these two perimeter wells range from five to 15 with 30 is full strength sea water. So there is saltwater in these wells, but we are not seeing an increase in saltwater in these wells through time. We're actually seeing the opposite trend. So the water in those wells is getting a little fresher through time. I do not know why, but that's something I'm going to have to think about. But at least we're not seeing an increase in saltiness through time at those perimeter wells. That's a good sign so far. So all this to say, salinity intrusion is present in those perimeter wells. So far, I don't think this is very concerning, but I think it's good evidence that we should continue monitoring these wells and keep an eye on this.
Beth?
Yes.
Question. Is it okay to ask questions along the way? So would it, does it make sense that rain, the amount of rain we get impacts the?
Absolutely.
Yeah, so if we have good rain, good rainy years, a period of rain, good rainy, then the aquifer stays fresh. If we went to a drought?
Yes.
Then it's more likely that we're going to get?
Exactly. There's a delay. So there could be like a couple of month delay in how quickly the aquifer fills up and how fresh or salty it gets. This past year was actually a kind of a dry year. So actually, the past few years have been dry years. So that's another reason I was a little perplexed by the, I mean, at least those wells getting a little pressure. But I just think I need to dig a little more.
Then how much would, like particularly on HG2S there, the buildup of the beach has helped keep the saltwater at bay?
Yeah, that could impact it too. And that's actually something that we have been talking with the Corps of Engineers about as well. But we're notifying them that we have all this aquifer data. That's actually one of my biggest concerns with the channel deepening, that there could potentially be impacts on our aquifer, especially in West Beach where the channel is already so close. So we let them know that we have the data that could use it for their modeling.
Thank you.
All right. So while we're talking about water quality, we'll move on to our title creeks. We also are trying to do long-term monitoring here because we know that there could be impacts due to climate change, due to development through time. Our creek is connected to the Cape Fear River. So things that happen in the Cape Fear River really have an impact on our creeks. But we could also have impacts from land use and things that we're doing here on the island that could negatively or positively impact creek water quality. So we do weekly sampling at four sites. Three of them are in Bald Head Creek. And then one is sort of like a control in Cape Creek. And then we also do quarterly sampling at two sites where we do overnight diurnal sampling. So every three hours, we take a sample for a full 24-hour period. And then if necessary, if we feel like there could have been a pollution event, we'll do a short weekly to see if there are potential sources of pollution that we've detected. This is a lot on one graph, but basically what I'm trying to show here is that for a lot of the water quality parameters that we're measuring. So we have nutrients here, ammonia, nitrate, phosphate. Not really ammonia, but for nitrate and phosphate, we're seeing a slow decrease in those concentrations through time. So this is the change over the period of time since 2017 that we've been measuring these. We're not seeing a long-term trend in ammonia. So some of these spikes are due to storm events. So you get a big inflow of junk come down the Cape Fear River. We're going to see it in our creek too. Or if we get a lot of flooding here on Bald Head Island, there's a lot of stuff that will go into the water quality. Nitrate's really interesting because there's a seasonal signal that nitrate tends to come in from the Cape Fear in winter. And why do we care about these nutrients? Because the nutrients can all fuel phytoplankton growth, algal blooms, microbial respiration. They're basically the engine that keeps, you know, our creeks running, the base of the food web. We started measuring chlorophyll in 21. We had sporadic measurements before that. But basically chlorophyll is a plant pigment, so those could indicate algal blooms like it says. But we aren't nowhere near the reference limit for the water quality in North Carolina. So our creek is in good shape for chlorophyll. And then finally, we do a lot of sampling of fecal indicator bacteria, which could indicate sewage spills. There have been a lot of issues with this in the past before, I think, Chris started here. That was one of the things that he got started. And you can see in 2017, there were a lot of events where there were a lot of, I don't know where it was coming from, but there were a lot of issues here where we have really high fecal coliform concentrations. But we've been doing really well the past few years. And we've seen a big decrease on the average in bacteria concentrations, which is good. All right. So back to that 24-hour creek sampling that I mentioned. This is the overnight sampling. It's going to orient you to this graph. We have those two sites. Here's our head site and here's our mouth site downstream and downstream. And we're looking at minimum dissolved oxygen overnight. This is the main reason that we do the overnight sampling is because overnight, as there's less photosynthesis and there's more cellular respiration, you can get really low dissolved oxygen concentrations overnight. You may be aware of this, like if you see a fish kill, a lot of times it's going to happen overnight. Across here, we have the years in each little section, but each little section is actually the quarter of the year. So, and then the two is where we consider it to be hypoxic. So this is when the level of oxygen is going to be stressful for animals. And that's a really universally established number. So we can see that in June and in September, October, very consistently, our minimum dissolved oxygen is in that hypoxic zone at that head site. We don't really see it at the mouth site because that mouth site is really well flushed with the river. It's very tidally influenced. And then we don't really have the concerns in the colder months because colder, when it's colder, you don't get as much of that like metabolism that's going to be using up oxygen. So this is something that we should just be aware of. If you're wondering why maybe you don't see, get as many crabs in the upper reaches of the creek. You don't see as much fauna during the upper reaches of the creek. They're not able to live there for long in the middle of the summer. Oysters, things like that, they do okay for periods of hypoxia. But if you're a fish, you're going to swim away from that. So something to think about. We don't want to see increases in that, basically. Back to fecal bacteria. It's like my favorite thing. I don't know why. But we have some cool new tech. I just kind of point out some new methods that we're using. First, we'll talk about our long-term trends. So this is actually looking at a year from, you know, January to December, seasonal trends throughout a year. And then these are our four sites. We measure weekly or biweekly. And then the gray line is the average fecal coliform. And then the orange is this past year. So you can see that on average this past year, our levels have been low. And then these limits are the limits set by the state for shell fishing and for recreation. So I showed before that back in like 2017, we had numbers sometimes at 10,000. So that is way above, like you don't want to be playing in that water. So, you know, we start to get concerned when we start seeing some higher numbers. But thankfully, we didn't see that this past year. We have some new tech, as I mentioned, that we're using. We have a water quality station. You may have seen out on the new dock. This is a grant-funded program where we're using a continuous water quality sign to try to predict bacterial concentrations. That's with Natalie Nelson from SC State. And then we have implemented our own in-house bacteria sampling this year. It's been going really well. And this means that we don't have to like drive samples off the island, especially with bridge issues. We're very thankful that we set this up. So this year, we've been doing E. coli here. It's a little more precise than fecal coliforms. And we would like to add enterococci sampling, which is what they use, is what the state standard is for recreational waters. And the good thing about that is that it won't like increase our time at all, just be a second like dip ball that we take in front of the computer.
Yeah, that would suggest there's a seasonal component to the people bacteria account, right? Sort of later in the year it goes up. Why is that?
Yeah, I think you tend to see it with storms. So that's when we see our hurricanes, our tropical storms, big flood events is when we tend to see a lot of stuff going in the water. So you may have noticed that I have some different graphs, different types of graphs here. I've been playing around a lot with a new system called Tableau. So hopefully soon, the next like month or two, we'll be rolling out a data dashboard on our website, which will allow anybody to play around with the data. It's public data. It's funded by the public. So we don't want it to be stuff that we're just keeping in-house for our scientists to get. But any fisherman can go out and look at the data from last week. And let me know if you see any trends or things that I should be aware of. But we're really excited about this coming out soon. All right. So we've heard, probably you've heard about the living shoreline coming. We're really excited about this initiative. A living shoreline, if you were not aware, is the idea of trying to protect a shoreline. And instead of using hardened structures like bulkheads, moving to using living materials. So you have oyster shells, oysters, marsh grasses, plantings. Sometimes people use coconut core and various things. And the idea is to make it a little softer, so you don't get a lot of like wave refraction, which can dig away at it more in a worse than situation. But also to provide more habitat, hopefully, it can have, be like a win-win situation for the people living there and also for nature. In the case of oyster reefs, they can continue to build on each other through time. So by, just by putting down substrate for oysters to grow on, they can keep, as long as it's in a good place and it's done right, they can keep building that reef and it's kind of a perpetual thing. So we've been playing around with this on our own for the past five years or so. We have put in some trial sites throughout the creek. And we've done some comparisons to control sites that are just bare sediment and wild oyster reef sites. And this is what they look like. If you're out there, you see some PVC sticking out. It's bag shell that we've put out and that it's starting to attract and grow other critters. This past fall, some of our interns did a comparison. They sampled the heck out of everything. And they're finding that the restored reefs are starting to look like wild reefs in a lot of different ways. So it's still not there yet in terms of the amount of species diversity, but that'll probably just take a few years. So we're really encouraged by this, that Bald Head Creek is a good place to grow oysters. What we wanted to do was possibly find a more sustainable solution instead of putting like plastic mesh bags out there in the creek. So we proposed to the village last year to install a living shoreline made out of this biodegradable material. And that is going to go down here near Marina Park. I'll show another picture in a sec. And Charlene and Jonathan did some preliminary sampling this past year. So this is where we are almost there. I think we're starting the camera permitting process. So hopefully this goes in in the next couple of months. This is where the living shoreline is going to go. This is the old pier that's no longer present. It's more, I don't know, here, this way now. But basically, it's in front of this bulkhead wall. And it will help protect this area of barch that is eroding a lot. It's going to be created out of this oyster catcher substrate, which I call, it's kind of like paper mache on sticks. Make these little tables with this concrete type material. And then eventually through time, it attracts oysters and it starts appearing like a real reef. And eventually that interior component biodegrades and we just are left with oysters. We attained some match funding from the North Carolina Coastal Federation, some fund from the village, and some funds from the Central Coastal Sustainability. And yeah, hopefully it'll be coming soon. We're going to have some educational signage explaining to people what it's all about and what living shorelines are, why they're important. And hopefully it'll encourage other landowners, waterfront homeowners to consider putting some living shorelines in instead of using bulkheads on the creeks. Any questions about oyster reefs? If you're interested in coming out and helping, we'll advertise those dates when we get it figured out. All right. So while we're talking about restoration, beach bitex is our big, our monster plant that we've been dealing with for a number of years. It is a really beautiful plant. It has beautiful berries, beautiful flowers. Unfortunately, some people have planted it as landscaping. But the problem with beach bitex, it's exotic, invasive. It outcompete native species like sea oaks. It could have negative impacts on sea turtles and other things. It grows in the dunes. And you may have seen some areas where there are these just long runners and they're just kind of crisscross the area. The problem is that they just, they're very superficial. So instead of growing deep like the sea oaks do and really holding on to that dune, they're just kind of going across the surface and they can get dug out by erosion. So we've been working on treating bitex for a number of years. And there haven't been many studies done on bitex. So figuring out what is the best method of treatment and the most efficient has been something that we've been working on the past couple of years too. On the left, we are showing just the status of treatment of the sites. On the right is a map of the current sites, all the little red dots. You can see that they're concentrated on South Beach, especially like the Kiligra Ridge, kind of east of Muscadine. And there are still a lot of sites out there. There are 88 sites out there, which could range in size from one little plant to half a yard. But the number of sites has been decreasing. So we feel good that we're at least keeping it at bay. We use this method called hack and paint. We're not spraying. We are digging into the skin of the plant and then painting herbicide on each little like exposed area. And it's very labor intensive, but that is what is recommended. If you just spray the outside, it doesn't like get into the cuticle of the plant. And we also don't want to kill native plants in the area. So the total number of plants have decreased, but we wanted to play around and see if we could find a better method. So over the past two years, we, we compared that method that we've been using to, okay, what happens if we just cut the plant at the base and then just paint a little like nub? And there were all these rumors that if you cut a plant, it's going to respout 50 times, it's going to turn into a zombie plant or, you know, all these things. And but no studies really have been done, at least not in the wild. But we've studied these, this goes to, these are one month, three months and eight months after treatment. And then this is the assessment score is like the effectiveness of the treatment. So how much of the plant has it killed? And you can see that eight months after treatment, the hack method, which is the one that we were using before, and the remove method are almost 100% effective. And what this doesn't show here is that we looked at it two years later and those removed plants are still gone. Like there is no sign of anything respouting. So I think that it would be more efficient in the long run if we just get those plants out of there. But what that's going to mean is potentially like coordinating with the village to figure out how to get those plants off the island. Because we don't want to end up wood chipping them and spreading them. And so that is something that we need to talk about. But I feel very confident that removing the plants is the best method. If, if that's not possible, we can continue, continue hacking. That's, that works too. All right. Moving on to everybody's favorite critter, the deer. Why they wear earrings, why they're wearing?
Yeah, one quick question. So if the spitting at the, it's the ground level we're doing and using the herbicide is working, could property owners do the same thing on their parking? Would you guys be willing to provide information about how to do it, provide the herb or where to get the herbicide or?
The thing about the herbicide is you have to have a, like a pesticide operator's permit to use it. What they could do is cut it and we could come around and.
Okay. That's something we're talking about. I mean, that would.
Yeah.
Yeah. So because there's a lot. Yeah. So because there's a lot of it inland, it's not just on the beach.
Yeah. And some of the most, some of the most effective areas actually have been where of like, we always kind of advise homeowners not to do it because we were worried that they might do it wrong or whatever. But when landscapers rip it up, it doesn't come back. So, you know.
I was going to say, what I, what worked best, I was fighting that stuff for years. I will take a shovel and dig the root and just follow to the next root fall, pull it up to the next root fall, pull it back. And there's, and they never come back.
Right. And I mean, you may have to go in and like repeat for the next few years. But I just feel like getting that plant out of there where it's less likely to come back. Just makes the most sense.
And just sort of context to that, that um, one, if we know, if we know there's sites where folks have planted this, that we do have an ordinance that council passed that regulates it. So they shouldn't be planting it. And then um, we do have some experience when we did this project in the early two thousands where we did remove it altogether. The village handled it from start to finish and um, had a landscape contractor we, we brought in to help do that big removal when we first found out this was a problem. And um, so we have some experience doing that.
Yeah, maybe at least get us down a baseline and do a big removal and keep painting for a few years. I just feel like it's a very slow battle right now and it might.
Well, it's a, it's a continued, we've always known it was going to be a continuous battle.
Yeah.
Because of the number of seeds that these things put off. I mean, it's just, uh, you know, and, and, and other, and other municipalities or oceanfront municipalities have been fighting the same struggle from up to the north, from Wrightsville to Curry Beach, on down to South Carolina's beaches. So it's not the only ones fighting the battle, so to speak.
One thing is if you see the flowers, you can pick the flowers. I'm serious. Um, don't pick the fruits because that'll just spread out. They can pick the flowers. All right. Moving on to deer. Um, so we have been monitoring the deer population using spotlight surveys. In the summer, we do camera surveys. If you see us loving around corn in the fall. Um, the red here, the bald camera surveys, we've really only been doing those along this um, since the beginning of the immunohemup contraception project, which began in twenty eighteen, twenty fifteen. Um, so these are the total number of deer. Um, back in the early two thousand, these big, you know, sawtooth pattern was when there were calls that were happening. So uh, you'd have a call and then the population would basically rebound because there's still a lot of fertile does in the population. So um, the immunohemup contraception program went from twenty fifteen to twenty twenty. Um, and then we've still seen fairly low pop, population of deer. We have not popped above that two hundred target number, which is good. Um, but it's just on the horizon that at some point in the coming years, we're probably going to have to start managing the deer population again. And you know, there's a choice about whether to use calls, immunohemup contraception. Calls are a lot less expensive, at least financially, but maybe more expensive uh, stress wise to the village. And uh, people don't really love that, I think, from what I hear politically. Um, so yeah, a, a concern is that in the, the last year, couple of years, we've seen a big influx of fawns to the population. So what's happening is that immunohemup contraception birth control is wearing off and those does are getting pregnant and then they're having more, more fawns. We thought that coyotes are probably helping out with the fawn population too, and they still may be. Um, but you know, it looks like the population growth rate is increasing just like that right now. Um, this is my, and you might just want to look at this kind of on your own, but this is my schematic for our seasonal pattern of how decisions are made about immunohemupception, uh, how that works with our um, population surveys, how it works with the villages, decisions about budget funding. But what I have found out in this past year, talking with the Wildlife Resources Commission, is that this can change a little bit. So basically we, the village can apply for an operational permit at any time when they're ready to do so. And that is valid for the annual year. So you can apply for it in January and you can use it through December. Um, there didn't seem to be a huge amount of uh, process involved with that. It's just kind of a form. Um, and the other thing that they're removing is the restriction that the immunohemupception operations would have to happen after hunting season. So that's good news because it gives some flexibility that it could potentially happen in the fall. Um, I don't know if you'd want it to happen in the fall because there are people on the island, but that at least gives some flexibility, maybe starting in December, something like that. But it would have to happen in that annual year. Um, so the other thing that I am getting more concerned about is the available deer habitat on the island. So um, we know there's been development on the island. There've been changes that I've seen just when we're doing our surveys. So I'm not sure that that two hundred target number is entirely appropriate anymore. So that's something that we want to look at this year is kind of do a reassessment of the available deer habitat on the island. Any questions about deer? Earrings mean they've been captured in the past. Some boys have earrings. It's like the most question, the biggest question we get. Some boys do because they may have been captured as a fawn um, before, you know, they can catch it. You look at it, you're like, oh, you're not a girl. Okay. But because they've been captured, they still need to get the, the tags. So the ones with the collar, those are the ones that we're still, still tracking. There's only one left with the collar that had got immunohemupception in eight twenty. So we're hoping that that falls off eventually. It's a radio collar. Um, that she doesn't need to wear forever.
So Beth, you're, you're recommending we can wait another year?
I think we can wait another year. Um, we'll see what our population surveys say next year. We'll see what the GIS analysis says. And I'm feeling that maybe at that point, it may be time to start again or consider starting again.
Do you, do you have a grip at all on the reduction of the habitat that's available? And whether, you know, what we would have to do to reassess the two hundred number?
So I think already two hundred is probably is a little high. Um, based on studies that have been done in other places about what is considered good deer habitat is the number of deer per acre of available habitat. So that's simply what I would do is I would say, okay, this is the deer per acre. And say twenty eleven, when that evaluation was made, this is what it was. Maybe when we were doing immunohemupception, this is what it is now. Um, I mean, we haven't seen any evidence of deer starving or um, you know, issues in their population growth rate that would make you think that they're, as a herd, they're not doing well. It's just a matter of what is sustainable for the island, especially as we reduce the number of like trees and um, areas where they can graze.
Yeah. Do you have any sense from the twenty eleven till now, how many acres have?
No, I don't. I need to look at that.
Yeah. And my question was kind of longer Scott said here is uh, when you build a home on a quarter acre lot, is the whole lot then considered non?
No, no, we look at the bill, areas, impervious surface.
Right.
We look at um, like tree, shrub, tree areas. It's basically land cover. So is it grass? Is it tree? I mean, deer really like edge habitats. So they actually, you know, you see them a lot in the dunes.
Mm-hmm.
So, but there's been a lot of building in the dunes. So that's something that I've noticed a lot.
Yeah, I just, I guess where my head was going is if you could come up with some sort of uh, factor, you know, X number of homes equals loss of one deer in a herd count, you know? To make it kind of easy on all of us to figure out how to track it.
Yeah.
Put a little, put a little uh, time and effort in front of, front of it to figure out what that factor.
Yeah.
You know, X number of homes. That might be helpful going forward.
Great. While we're talking about wildlife, um, we, one of our technicians pulled together all of our historical alligator data going back to two thousand and seven, which is pretty cool to see. Um, and then just, these are the different sized plots of the alligators. So they're kind of in a weird order here, but um, by far, most of them are kind of unknown because we out, we're out there doing a spotlight survey and we see eyes and we don't want to necessarily get too close to measure them. But what, what this shows through time is we are getting more and more of the little guys. So these are the zero to four. Uh, there are a lot of, all the baby hole on hole fifteen. I think that mom in there has been doing really well. I think she nests in there in the past few years. We've been seeing a lot of babies. Um, and then we've had pretty consistent, these are the big guys, the pink uh, are the eleven plus. And pretty consistent numbers through time. I think we probably have about thirty individuals on the island and maybe about ten that are, you know, like adults. So that would be four to six feet or larger. Um, I don't really have concerns about the alligator population. My biggest concerns though are that they're being exposed to some contaminants and we don't really know how many. But this study that was done um, in the past couple of years showed that our alligators on Bald Head Island had a lot of Gen X in their blood. And they were showing more lesions and things like that than alligators in the Waukama watershed, which is a control. And then this past year, we also had an alligator pass away due to blood poisoning because it had blood weights in its gut. And that is something that we want to talk, we still need to talk with the club about, BHA about, and work together to figure out what to do about the fishing issues in the lagoons. It's really important for human safety, but also environmental going into those lagoons can't be good for, you know, other wildlife as well. Really cool animals and we're really lucky to have them here. There we go. All right. So speaking of predators, um, we have coyotes. It's probably the number one question we get at the conservancy is what's going on with the coyotes? Why are they pooping everywhere? Um, this is the time of year when they mark their territory. And um, but what's nice about that is we can take advantage of it. And last year we took advantage of that sample that they were providing and were able to do some research with it. Um, we do, when we're doing our deer surveys, we also count coyotes and foxes that we see. So this is kind of a, you know, extra bonus to the work that we're already doing. Um, so this is a little bit of an index of the coyote population, but we don't really know exactly how many coyotes are out there. From that, it's just like, how many do I happen to see? Uh, we saw a big decline in twenty twenty-two. And then even this past year, we only saw one on our surveys all summer. But um, and then we also saw less activity at sea in twenty twenty-two on the beaches, less um, interest in sea turtle nests, which was great. But this past year we did lose one sea turtle nest to coyotes. So they're still out there. They're still active. Um, I think our number one best defense against coyotes is having our sea turtle team out there on the beach all night, every night. Not all beaches in the area can do that. So they tend to do more proactive um, trapping. So Fort Fisher, for example, they trap coyotes every year. The numbers vary, but um, you know, I think this pattern looks fairly similar to this pattern. So um, I'm just wondering if because they trapped so many in twenty twenty-one, maybe that's why we weren't seeing as many here in twenty twenty-two. But that would mean that the populations would need to be connected. Um. So as I mentioned, we uh, worked with Liz Kirka from the Museum of Natural Sciences to take those coyote scat samples and turn them into population data. So she was able to do genetic analysis on those samples to determine who these coyotes are, if they're related to each other. And then if we know who they are, we can count them. And what she found is that we had, you know, so we had interns running around and me and picking, picking this stuff up. Um, and what she found is that there were eight to twelve potentially coyotes on Bald Head Island. This was in twenty twenty-two, winter twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. Um, and then these are indicating family groups. So the numbers are individuals and where they would hang out. We had two main family groups and then we had a couple of unrelated individuals. And when I say family groups, it's a first degree relative, like a parent, child or siblings. And what's really interesting is that I managed to get a sample from Fort Fisher and that guy up there was related to this guy who's hanging out here on Little Island. They're like brothers or something. Um, so that shows us that our populations are related. Their coyotes could be coming down here. Ours could be escaping up there. And when they trap up there, it benefits us because we're getting fewer on the island. But um, I'm seeing a lot more scat this year. Uh, we, we haven't been collecting it this year, but I think it would be cool and good and interesting to do it again next year and see if we're seeing any changes. All right. Um, then kind of bringing up the rear here, we do shorebird conservation. It was a really good year for shorebirds. We put out um, these symbolic postings to protect nesting areas. And then the birds go and nest wherever they want. Then we have to move signs around and try to protect them. But we have some really cute and important birds here. Wilson's plover's nest here. American oyster catchers. We had nests on um, access one for the first time since I've worked here. And then we also had a successful lease turn colony near the terminal growing area, also the first time since twenty seventeen. And all of these birds nest directly in the sand. That's why we put the postings up. You can see how invisible the eggs are when you're walking around. They look like a shell or something. It's really easy to step on. So if you are in that posted area, please keep out, put your dogs out. Um, and the lease turns will let you know they will dive farm you. So. Um, but we're, we're really happy with how it went this past year. We're also working on educating the public. So um, we would be out there with a scope sometimes and if people are coming out with their dogs, we can talk to them about, hey, there's a nest over here. Do you want to look at it? And this is why it's important to keep your dog on a leash. And then finally Diamondback Terrapin Conservation. This is not part of the village contract this past year, but we've been working really closely with the village since twenty twenty-one, when Diamondback Terrapin management areas were put in place by the state. So basically what this means is in bald head waters, all crab pots have to have a terrapin excluder device such as this um, in order to keep Diamondback Terrapins out of the crab pots. Because Diamondback Terrapins like the bait, but they are air breathers and they will drown if they're in a crab pot for too long. Um, so we've been working with the state on that. We've been working with the village on getting these Teds out. We've done a number of workshops, um, and then helped people install them. They're kind of a pain to install. And then we also participated in um, Terrapin Turp, Terrapin Tally surveys. And this is something that is a citizen science effort. And if you're here in the spring and you like to kayak, please look for those opportunities. It's a lot of fun. And we know exactly where they hang out now. Cape Creek is the key spot. So um, last year we saw twenty-eight Diamondback Terrapins. Look at all these guys. And we had a bunch down in the lower reaches of Village Creek. Um, and like little head pops up, super cute, and you put it on your app. And um, it's really cool to be able to contribute to, and that data is being used directly by the state. Um, also last week, we were invited to a crab pot design workshop with fishermen and the UNCW. So there could be new changes still to crab pot design that tries to keep more terrapins out of the crab pots. So stay tuned on that. That's pretty much it. I know that was a lot. We do a lot. It's a busy, a lot of fun. Um, we love talking with people about the work that we do. And if you ever want to come out and do some fieldwork with us, hack weights and vitex, everything, kayak for terrapins, just let me know. Let's have a.
Um, shortcomings in our support of you?
What's that?
Do you have any shortcomings in our support of you?
No, it's just finding the time to focus on so many different things, but I think they're all important. So. Um, every year we try to think really carefully about what are we getting the most information from? And if there are things that we feel like, okay, maybe this is just a one-year thing, we can take it out. Um, so I hope that you all feel that too, that the things that we're doing or that we're suggesting are valuable. And if the public feels that way, I think we could do a better job getting um, the information out to the public. And that's what we're going to try to do with that, a data dashboard too.
Yeah, great. Thanks. And they do finish up with a, sort of an annual report, which once I get it, I'll share with you all.
If, if I'm not mistaken, though, our funding for the conservancy was down in last budget versus the prior year. Was that because y'all requested less or was that more a decision that we made as a, a village body?
The proposal varies from year to year depending on projects can come and go. So um, and then immunohemupception is a big chunk that we have not been doing the past few years. So if you look, if you go back and look to like twenty twenty, the numbers were higher. Um, and Chris and I have talked about how much it would cost to add that backend that, you know, for future. Um, and Chris and I have talked about how much it would cost to add that backend that, you know, for future planning. Um, again, I don't think we need it this coming year.
Sure.
But um, maybe to think about for the future.
Good. Uh, one other, just quick question, if you don't mind. And uh, is, I know earlier this year, we had um, some conversations about increasing the size of boats in the area. Have y'all noticed any impact from that? Possibly more negative or is that kind of been a non-issue? Or is that even something you've looked at?
I don't think we're out there enough to really see it, but I think, yeah, wakes are a concern for sure. And that's one of the benefit of the living shoreline project and putting it near the creek mouth there. Hopefully it'll help absorb some of the wakes.
Okay.
Um, I think that if people follow the wake pools, that they can have a bigger boat. But I don't know how, you know, uh, forcing that is always tricky.
Yeah, okay, fair enough.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brad.
Nice to help, Brad.
Good job, Beth. Thank you.